I'll call a meeting to order.
...to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public forum, we have anybody signed that for that?
Nope.
I'd like to speak.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me address the board. I wasn't at the last meeting that you had discussed the payment that you made to the contractors on at the landfill? And what was the process used to make that payment? How was it decided to pay it? I believe that it was stated that payment was supposed to be made at the end of the project?
No, if they request some ahead of time can do that. If you weren't going to do it till the end, but how it works.
Okay, so did the board decide this, or how did they get decided that the payment was going to be made?
That's how it happens all the time. I mean, it's nothing, nothing new, let's put it that way.
So when there's a contract, who authorizes paying the bill?
Well, they submitted a bill. Go ahead Becky.
The commissioners. It was put through the claims.
So it's just put through the claims when there's a bill and it's not discussed?
They have the money coming. They don't get all the money. I mean, I guess, I'm not sure what you're getting at.
Oh, I guess my concern is, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I listened to the video and as chairperson and the commissioner that's been on the project, you made it sound like the project wasn't near completion.
I know, because they're not near completed getting their money either. So I'll ask again. I'm not sure where you're going.
Well, I just thought maybe the board should have authorized that at a meeting. It's eighty-six thousand dollars.
It was discussed when we, when the claims was here, it was discussed what this payment's for, and it was to get equipment rental. So that's why we authorized the payment.
It was discussed when the claims were approved?
Yes.
At the meeting?
Yes.
I didn't hear that discussion about the claims.
At a prior meeting when we paid it, that's when it was discussed.
I don't, I don't believe that's true, but I will look it up and...
Okay, what are you getting at?
Well, I just think the board should be approving this, eighty-six thousand dollars. I mean, if it wasn't...
They did approve it.
It went through the claims. It was approved. There was a motion made to approve the claims. It was a claim.
So anytime there's a bill in the county, no matter what size it is, if it's in the claims list, you just approve it?
If it should be approved, if they decide they should approve it, then they approve it.
Okay.
We voted as a board to, we voted as a board to approve the project. That dollar amount was already approved as a board. So now when there's a claim that's sent through as a payment process, you just, it goes through the claims process. I don't, I guess I'm not sure what...
Does the contract says that, or does the contract say the payment's going to be made at the end of the project?
It was supposed, going to do it at the end of the project, but it, it's not. We approved the contract period, so I guess I'm, I don't see what the problem is here.
Well, I guess my concern is, a lot of the projects that are done, and now we've got some litigation, the projects have been paid off and they haven't been done properly, and we're fighting those in litigation. And now we've got this project and according to you, Mr. Shilling, that the project is, there's a lot of work to be done out there yet.
Yeah.
And we've already given them this much, and there's going to be a lien put on their next payment. And so what's the incentive for them to even finish the project?
Well, it's just how business is done.
There's a lot of money left to be paid on it.
Okay. Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Hear none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
As soon as they may. Discussion regarding comp time and consider most approved, paying employee cure time. You guys had a, a meeting and what you kind of thought of this whole thing?
I talked to the Department of Labor. We can pay them if they request it. We decided maybe to have them sign forms stating they want it to be paid for their accrued time. And if, of course, it's not available on the budget, then the department head don't have to approve it. Basically, is what we kind of came up with, right?
I think we kind of came up with they have to sign a written request if they wanted or something.
Right.
Just so we, just needed that to be approved so that he can write their checks before the end of the year.
So are we gonna just have one person out of one department get it? I thought this was gonna be a blanket deal. Where are you gonna do it, or we're not gonna do it?
Because some departments don't have it in their budget. And when I talked to the Department of Labor, they said we may do it. If they request it.
Okay. You don't have any comp time in yours. Who's all got comp time yet?
Grab the list.
My department does.
The report I gave you is live. I think nothing has changed there.
You have some that have occurred earlier, but you, you don't have them occurring any, anymore, right?
Since the meeting, I got the commissioner minutes from meeting of March 5th. There was a separation at that time to not consider comp time and go direct overtime payment. So we're, we're on our way to get out of it.
So at least, get your office.
My landfill guys might want theirs paid out, but it, there's, it's not in my budget this year, so if they do, it'll have to be under the first year.
Do all of your guys want theirs bought out?
Is that what consensus is? They would agree with it. Right?
What we, what we talked about in the meeting was that it, it could be done by department. However, the department heads, after they talked to their employees, wanted to have it. And that is, um, there's already a precedent in the personnel policy under standard workday. The first sentence under standard workday says, "The standard workday varies by, varies depending on department." And so it's, they're already split out, highway, landfill, jail and sheriff, and courthouse employees. And each has a different standard for a workday. So that, whether they earn overtime or compensation, could also be covered in that. So they're already, we're already doing things different by department. And I mean, it's easy enough to see how all the departments vary, not only in their standard workday, but in, in many ways.
That's not pay, that's hours that's working. But standard workday wasn't, that reflects the hours, not the pay.
Correct, but what I'm saying is that...
We're trying to do it to standardize how everybody's getting paid, or are we gonna just leave it where it's different pay for everybody?
Well, I don't think it's different pay for everybody. I think it's whether a department wants overtime or comp time. It's not, we're not asking for different pay.
Basically, you are.
Yes, sir.
We're out of the comp time business now, aren't we? We have to change our personnel manner.
Just for certain departments.
The highway, the jail, and sheriff.
Just for different departments.
Isn't there just a cap on the comp time?
We're not, not totally out of it.
Eighty hours.
Is that what you mean, Jim?
Yeah, didn't we decide not to give comp time anymore? We just gotta change our personnel policy.
Well, just for different departments.
The departments in the court, like the landfill prefers overtime, the jail and sheriff prefer overtime, the highway prefers overtime. The offices up here, the state's attorney and the extension office prefer comp. And the main difference being, is that we, each of these offices have a time that's a little bit slower. These people can work out a time when it works with their office to take the comp time. That doesn't work so well in the sheriff's office, the landfill, or the highway department. They end up in a position where they can't take the extra hours. So my point is that we're, we're already have each department separated, and I think it's just a matter of simple sentences such as, "This department will not be allowed comp time. They will be paid overtime." "This department will be allowed comp time. They will not be paid overtime." I think it's that simple.
But I look at it that, what's happened over the years is that I think the county should have been a little tougher on it and not let people get so much on their books.
And we, that we fixed. That's down to eighty.
Right, but, there's still the but of all that's there that some people has. And, and I don't think that's right, because basically, it's just, it's just, to me, it's just a bank account, or savings account. I don't care how you want to look at it, but the bottom line, that's really what it is. Because the money, let's say that this happened, I'm just gonna throw a year out there, four years ago, well, four years ago, your wage was at this, now it's at this. So I don't know how else you'd look at it. To me, I, I think it should get cleaned up. That's my personal opinion and, and the end there. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but...
I don't think you can force us to...
I know you can't, but I, I'm just saying, that's how I look at it. That it should get...
And I have to tell you that I'm pretty defensive on mine, because honestly, I didn't have much choice on that, whether I wanted overtime or comp time, and I, I had to work the hours. So I'm, I'm a little defensive, and I know I have a lot of them. I don't, I also, I try not, I, I know when I can use it, when I can't. I'm trying to get it used up. I'm just kind of not willing to back off on that very much. I wouldn't have that kind of comp time unless I had been required to work those hours. And while I was working those hours, I'm not complaining about it. I'm not complaining about the hours I worked, the work needed to be done. But during that time, I also lost somewhere between forty and fifty hours of vacation time, because I was at my max and couldn't take any time off.
So then, to me, what it looks like is just a matter of which department is gonna want it and doesn't want it. Is that how you guys look at it?
That, I think that's what it boils down to, y'all. And I can see the offices up here.
We want ours to change, I mean, to stay the same.
You want no comp time?
Correct. Like it's set up right now. Nyla?
Comp time works better than that.
It is.
We never accumulate a whole lot.
What's that?
We don't accumulate a whole lot.
Comp time's fine.
Yeah.
You want overtime.
What?
You want overtime, definitely.
It just doesn't make any sense to carry a fiscal year expense into the following year.
I understand what you're saying.
You guys understand what I mean when I say that?
Yeah. Pay it, so you're saying pay it out and, and stay away from comp time altogether?
Yes, yes.
Casey?
I prefer comp time, but there's never gonna be that much in my office either.
We prefer comp, but we, neither one of us can earn any more. So we can't have it right now. We can't have either right now. We're good.
Can we, I know we can't in Deb's case, but can we limit it, if say Casey makes twenty hours of comp time, you know, January, February, March, that she's gotta use it up in that fiscal year?
Well, limited to eighty hours, I, I guess that for me, maybe will be a problem. If you earn it, you have to use it that year, is what you're saying.
Because it wouldn't, in the offices up here, it wouldn't be like the highway department where on the twenty-ninth of December, we get a badge, most of them, they gotta work, you know, twenty-four hours a day or whatever.
I, I wouldn't, I, I don't think I would be against that.
Would that be an option?
Yeah, I don't think I would be against that. Would, would you, Nyla?
If you start it next year?
You're right. If you start it in twenty-twenty, where they can only earn eighty and it has to be used that fiscal year? And that, that falls kind of in line with exactly what Gary's saying.
If you only have, if you're not gonna get that much, what's the difference between the comp time and overtime anyway? If you're not gonna cure that much to begin with.
It's the employee's choice.
Yeah, the employee prefers comp time. And we do have a slower time when she can take it. We have our busy times. She earns it.
In this, in this case, would it be all right then, if they didn't get that used up, they'd lose it at the end of the year?
Starting next year, yeah.
Starting, yeah, in twenty-twenty.
That would be fine.
Would that be an option, you think?
Oh, yeah, you gotta do something like that so that...
Limiting eighty hours must be used in the fiscal year.
How does, how does the policy really read right now?
For comp time, it says...
Back to my number one question.
Authorized compensatory time shall be administered within the same time limits of overtime and be accrued at time and one half. No more than eighty hours of compensatory time may be approved by any employee at any given time. Any overtime worked after reaching the eighty-hour compensatory time maximum will be paid out to the employee per policy by point seven, which covers overtime, but may result in disciplinary action if prior authorization was not granted by the Board of County Commissioners. Upon separation from county service, the employee will be paid for any unused compensatory time at the final rate of pay. Compensatory time hours accrued and taken must be reported at the end of each month to the county auditor, and that was amended, amended in August of eighteen, to put that cap on.
But it doesn't say nothing about being used.
No.
That we would...
That would have to be something new, be used in that fiscal year.
Where did the eighty hours come from? Is that just a hypothetical figure thrown out there?
You guys discussed it, sorry.
I think that's what Ryan brought us, wasn't it?
In, in August of eighteen, you guys discussed that, have adopted that, had a commissioner...
Would you ever use eighty hours of comp time?
We would not get up to eighty hours, no.
No, I probably would never get to eighty hours.
I would never get up to eighty either.
And remember that it says in here that if you have comp, it has to be under prior authorization. I came, I believe, I came in...
I know you came in.
May and ask and have never gotten an answer, which is fine. We haven't learned it, you know, because it has to be priorly authorized. So everybody needs to follow that, too.
That's what I'm saying.
My employees have a combined seven point five hours between the two of them, so it doesn't affect us really, and I think it'd be easier just to go overtime.
Becky, that is the only office up here that preferred overtime, and she prefers it for both of her departments, the landfill and her office.
It's gonna be way easier for countywide to do one or the other, instead of this office gets this, this office gets that. If we're gonna all try to be equal, and that's what everybody's complaining about during a lot of these, is, well, this office gets this. Sheriff's, tailors get free meals over there.
Nobody's complaining about that.
There's been a lot of complaints in, in the past.
Nobody's complaining about the difference in the standard workday.
There's been a lot of complaints in the past about this office gets this, this office doesn't get this.
I, I agree too. I think it'd be way easier just to go overtime.
Either way, you go one or the other.
Can we say that then about the standard workday? We all work the same?
That'd be fine, too.
Well, how would you do that?
You can't do that.
Jail can.
Jail or the highway.
So you can't say it, that'd be fine, too, except...
Well, there's a difference in that. Your office isn't affected by a, a big snowfall.
No.
Okay?
Which is exactly why I said it's already split by, by standard workday, so why can't...
There's a difference between working and paying, is what I'm getting at.
Well, we don't all get paid the same, so...
You're right.
And I don't hear anybody complaining about it.
Should you be able to go get free lunches at, at the jail?
No, because I can leave. I closed from, for an hour. They can't leave.
But they can bring their lunch with them.
They could. But I don't think their lunches are costing them very much. I don't think it's a bad thing to give that employee that little bit of...
That's just another, one of the deals of...
But I, I've never heard anybody up here at the courthouse say, "Can I go get lunch at the jail today?"
Well, let's get back to the comp time.
My suggestion is all are, all of it or nothing.
I got a question for Nyla. If, if you think you're gonna, your employees are gonna need comp time, say, or work extra in two weeks, are you gonna come to us and ask for that?
I don't if it stays under the eighty hours.
If it stays under eighty?
I have a feeling.
Is that...
If it's gonna go over eighty, they, they want you to come and ask, correct?
The way I understand...
According to the video, it's supposed to be approved before they use any of it.
Like, for example, if, right now, neither Greg or I can earn any, if I get a customer or a phone call that takes me into the noon hour or after five, we compensate for that sometime. We flex that time off during the week. Either you leave fifteen minutes early for lunch the next day, or you leave fifteen minutes early, you know, because usually a customer won't take you over fifteen minutes or half an hour, and you can flex that off within a week. That would be the comp time that might happen without prior authorization, but normally you can flex that off.
Some of mine comes from, Leah also helps out with the janitor, someone presenting or secretary, so she will stay and do that.
But our personnel policy says states, it's gotta be pre-approved for any comp time, doesn't it?
So we're not earning comp time, we're flexing that time off, and there's also a policy for flex time.
Yes.
It's impossible to get prior approval for every comp time.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, y'all.
If you end up late on a Friday, how are you supposed to get that?
This allows the board, if you've got somebody that's, that is abusing it, this allows the board to take some action if they feel that it's getting abused. So I don't, I don't see any reason to take that statement out of there either.
Mary, how do you look at this comp time?
Confused. I guess I, I asked the question before, you know, as far as if we did go to overtime and just straight overtime, if the comp time could be paid and split, you know, to help the, help the budgets. In other words, could we pay half food out this year and the other half out next year?
Yeah, and that was one thing that Brian brought up when I talked to him, that you can do that.
It's worth it.
You can do a monthly payment just to get it down, need to, or whatever. Do it any way you'd like. But whatever you do, it has to be paid at their current rate of pay. So if you pay half of it this year, it'll be this rate of pay, and the next year, it'll be that rate of pay.
And at their request, correct?
Yeah, you are able to pay it out. It says you may pay it out, but it shall be paid at their current rate of pay.
See, I guess that's the, that's, to me, that's the big problem with the comp time, is the change of rate of pay. I mean, if it would've been paid out as overtime, it would've all been paid at the current rate of pay that they had at that time.
At time and a half?
At time and a half.
We're paying comp time at regular time?
No, it's paid at time and a half at their current rate of pay.
No, but if you, if you take, or if Nyla's, one of her staff takes a day or works extra, say eight hours, and takes next week off, this hour for hour, right, is not, or it is time and a half.
See, that's where I'm going, that the comp time is, is going to just keep building and hurting us over a long time. That, to me, is where I feel we need to eliminate the comp time and go to overtime pay, because in a case now where we've got a set, now where we've got a maximum eighty hours, but let's say you had eighty hours, if we put a deal in there where they have to burn it up in the, in the current year, then it wouldn't affect anything. But when you've got comp time that's carried over, 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 every ten years, all of a sudden, you went from a person that was getting paid seventeen dollars an hour to where now they're maybe getting paid eighteen dollars an hour, and you're paying time and a half at eighteen instead of time and a half at eighteen, at seventeen. That's the, that's the problem that I see, that's just, it's, it's creating a monster down the road if we don't nip it in the bud.
That's what I think.
I see no problem with the statement that it has to be used for, not eighty. Whatever you earn, as much as possible needs to be priorly authorized by this board, and if you don't use it, it's gone.
Yeah, I was in here the other day, and it was hour for hour.
Yes, sir.
Comp time hurts vacation time. Where it gets easier to, you, you're not saving any money. It isn't an expense, comp time, an, an hour of comp time has the same value as an hour of paid overtime. Follow me? So if you've got eighty hours of comp time on top of, of vacations that are at their max limit, if you have to take the comp time before the end of the year, now you're subject to having too much vacation on the books. Where pay it out, get it off the books. Employees should be directed to use your vacation to keep the vacation allowance down to a reasonable level. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand firm, pay it out, get it off the books.
It, yeah, there's no question about it. I mean, if anybody's, I've been here for this amount of time, I've never been a comp person. I think in the end, it's, it's not right.
Do we, do we currently, like, vacation time, is that accrued also, or does that have to be spent?
That's accrued, and that depends on how many years you've worked here. You get a certain amount of vacation time and a certain amount of full time, depending on how many years you've worked.
Our department draws... Take a year off between the comp time and the vacation time.
Our department, how many of the seven, or eight, or nine are over on comp time?
Same.
I think it's...
Vacation. Who?
That's, that's not gonna happen, you guys don't have prior authorization, so, and it's, and yeah. No, but I, I didn't hear anybody complain about the cap or the prior authorization.
We have two separate issues here. We should probably discuss one, so we, you know, I don't want these motions to be all jumbled. So Gary is requesting to pay out the highway guys, correct?
Well, how are we gonna do this? What if we go to each department? Ask them if they want to pay out?
There's, we're gonna just have them sign a form requesting their comp is paid out. If budget allows, which...
Are we gonna have that? Is that employee gonna do that, or is that supervisor?
Well, the employee will have to submit it, but their supervisor has to approve it, because their supervisor's in charge of budget.
That makes me wonder, if Gary doesn't want any more comp time in his department... That makes me wonder if Gary doesn't want any more comp time in his department.
We're just talking about that one issue, and then we'll talk about whether you accrue comp time overtime. Cause he says his budget can pay it out, and we may pay it out in the department.
But I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you want a mandatory that your guys get paid up all of them, right?
No more comp time on the books.
And you want it all bought out, not, not for three of the five or whatever, right?
I don't, I don't think he can do that.
But I think he's talked to them and.
They, unless they agreed to it, they signed saying that they want it.
I worked on this, but I haven't run it past Jamie yet, 'cause I haven't seen him. But we have the standard workday, which says it varies. So at the courthouse, I added compensatory time is allowed at the Director of Equalization Office, Extension Office, Register of Deeds Office, State's Attorney's Office, and Treasurer's Office with prior pre-authorization. These offices will not receive overtime pay. The Auditor's Office will not receive compensatory time, but will receive overtime pay with prior authorization. On the Highway Department, I put this department will not receive compensatory time, but will receive overtime pay with prior authorization. For the landfill, I have the same sentence. And for the jail and sheriff, I have the same sentence, that they will not receive compensatory time, but they will receive overtime pay with prior authorization.
So what about emergency management who leads?
I'll put you there. There's no, there was no.
We just part time.
There was, there was no emergency manager in here, but we can add it.
Then the way you have that wrote, none of Nyla's or them can get any overtime.
Correct.
They, they'll only get comp time.
So is by department, the way it's already split apart in the policy manual.
Say that?
I'm fine with that, but I would like to be authorized for up to eighty hours without calling you. I don't wanna have to call you on Friday at five and say, Chris, I'm here.
I think eighty hours pre-authorization is quite a bit.
I guess, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say this, might make some of you mad, but anyhow, I guess we've heard all you guys, what you're saying about it. But to me, the bottom line is still us people sitting here that are gonna make that decision. Kevin, what really is your theory on this?
My theory is, I would be in favor of, if that department wants to get paid and they have the funds paid out right now, make it. So next year's budget, everybody is gonna get paid out, or you're gonna go straight overtime instead of comp time.
Mary.
Next year's budget's already set, and I don't have enough to pay out.
When we go to budget next year, for the following year.
I'm not gonna take mine all at one time.
I guess I would, I would agree with Kevin in the sense that if we got the deal, get it paid out, and be done with it. I don't know that I have a problem if there's certain departments that wanna have comp time, to leave comp time as long as it has to be used in that fiscal year.
And I think that.
Cause then I don't see that as a, I don't see that as a burden on the county. What I do see in, in agreeing with Gary on that part is, it totally affects your overtime. If you're gonna use the comp time.
Vacation.
Or, yeah, excuse me, vacation time. Personally, I guess I would, I would prefer just getting everybody on the same deal and say, let's just do overtime and be done with it. But I know that's gonna be hard on some of the budgets.
Kim.
I don't have a problem giving the office staff up here a comp time if we're gonna limit it to eighty hours and use in that fiscal year. But I, I do know, you know, if we're gonna start buying out comp time in the Assessor's Office, it's gonna be twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, probably like three years before. We're not gonna get it bought out in twenty, cause she does not have that in her budget, so. So that'd be in the twenty twenty-one budget, and probably stretch it out over a number of years.
I don't think it's a problem to add that you have to use the comp time in the year, in the same year, and there will be no accrual of comp time from year to year.
I agree kind of with Jim there a little bit, but I look at it too though, I mean, some of that comp time, as much as a person has, well, hell, I mean, that would be almost pretty close to impossible to use. You'd be gone a lot. So I mean, I don't know how, how you get it used. So that's just gonna sit there and just sit there. I, I think I agree with Jim there that it should be maybe just every year. It might take three, four years. But so it's gone, but comp time's been, it's.
I think from what Becky told us is that by federal law, you can't force anyone to take a payout.
That, that's true, that's what she said, but that's not saying, I'm sure we can, we can still make you use that comp time out.
I'm not gonna use it if I have work to do.
See, and there, see, there's the problem again. I mean, how you, that's just gonna set back.
I mean, I know when I, I know when I'm free to use a day or two, I know when I can't. I know, I know what my schedule and work is.
Yes, Jim.
Just a little side note, I have a friend of mine, worked for the federal government Internal Revenue Service. She retired two years ahead of time on comp time. So, you know, that's a big burden to the county.
It is.
If that happens, it.
That's what I'm saying, let's just go to overtime, we don't have to worry about carrying that much.
Yeah, but.
You don't worry about it anyway, cause you have a cap on it.
If we have a cap on it, they have to use it.
If we're gonna have a cap on it, I would say, put the cap down to at least no more than forty hours.
I don't think that's a problem either, cause you're not gonna know that you're gonna need eighty hours of comp time again. There's no way you're gonna know that. You're not even gonna know if you're gonna need forty.
Okay, but right now we got overtime, comp time, vacation time, sick time.
Take it down to forty, I don't see a problem.
Pregnancy time or maternity time.
I guarantee you I'm not taking that. Um, take the comp, take the cap down to forty, I don't see a problem with that either.
I think the, the cap would probably set it eighty mainly for the Highway Department.
Probably.
You know, cause they, they rack up a lot of extra time.
When Becky worked for thirty, sixty, seventy and a half hours, forty is plenty high for a cap for comp. For these offices up here, which are the only offices that want it. Forty would be plenty high enough.
So what does our first motion have to say? That we're gonna take comp time away from Highway Department?
We don't know yet.
Don't ask me.
We take comp time away from Highway Department, Sheriff and Jail and Landfill?
Yeah, but that's all.
That's already done.
That's already done.
We need a motion to pay out.
Pay out their comp.
The ones that are requested.
Whoever wants it.
And then we can work on these.
Pay out Highway Department can move to directly overtime, so their comp would literally go away.
They're, they're already.
As of now, the Highway Department cannot. As of now, the Highway Department cannot accrue anywhere over for comp time?
Right.
Jim, that happened on Mark's stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, it did.
The landfill cannot either, and the jail, sheriff cannot either. So we don't need a motion on that.
Okay, well, then I would move, we buy out the comp time on the employees that wanted.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I, I need a second.
As, as long as the budget can stand it or.
I'll need a second.
A second.
Yeah, a second. Any more discussion on that? Yes.
So with that motion, I agree with it. My question is, when the employees that want to, does that mean that in his department, that he wouldn't, if one employee didn't want to, they wouldn't have to be bought out?
Right.
From what Becky is saying, that, uh, I have to make the offer to.
So in other words, you could possibly have everybody on except for maybe one person that doesn't wanna take and buy out comp time and leave that on the books? From what the girls are saying.
That's what I understood from the Department of Labor.
And that we have no choice on that, huh? Wow, thanks.
Any other discussion? Here now, if they were to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
Honest other, I have, I have a question for you, cause now we have added, you wanna change the cap on comp and make a statement that you must use it within the fiscal year. Cause we, we do have that issue, and we have two other issues that we need to work on, and we can get this language approved by Jamie and do it at the next regular meeting, if you would like to do that. Because we have the lim, um, the ninety day where they don't qual, during their probationary period where they don't qualify for health. And then there was a, um, final paycheck thing that there was some wording on that, um, Eva needed, would like to see because we're now going to be paying insurance pre, ahead. And she would like to make sure we cover that in their final paycheck, so that we get paid back for that insurance. So there's actually three, three or four issues on the board concerning the personnel policy. And we, I'd like to get the language approved through Jamie before we adopt it.
Yeah. I don't think a motion should be made on anything until there's actual language written up to be read, to be approved, like we used to do it.
Yeah.
So I think this probably isn't an emotion that should be made today.
And address it like at the next meeting or something. Not, not the thirty of the meeting, but the re, next regular.
So with this last motion that we just passed, can any department get, based on that motion, pay out their comp time? Highly recommend that.
I guess to me, though, we still haven't made a decision whether or not we're gonna keep comp time period. That's our decision.
And I think that maybe that's a discussion for when the language gets approved, and then you guys can approve it or not.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing it go to forty hours for the offices up here and, and the statement, they have to use it in that fiscal year.
If we're gonna have comp time, I would, I would agree with that. I just don't, just carrying it over is, I mean, that's gonna fight us.
I just absolutely see no problem with adding that language alone. I can't imagine that any office up here would have a problem with that.
Yes, Gary.
The department heads have the responsibility of monitoring their budget allowance. I think every department has a salary, fixed item salary. If you have a fixed item salary in your budget, if you don't monitor that value, especially toward the end of the year, it's the department head's responsibility to have money available for payout. Follow me? So it'd be a lot easier to go with the straight overtime. You've already made the motion, and I don't wanna bring the past into it, no, cause that's. Be in the future. Did you not read something, Deb, that anything over eighty hours of, of accumulated compensation is paid out?
I believe that's what it said, and then, then you're liable for disciplinary action.
So.
That's, any overtime worked after reaching the eighty hour limit.
So does that not say that when you get to eighty hours, if you have two hundred hours, that there's a hundred and twenty hours that's paid out?
I think so, except for the fact that when Becky checked with, um, the Labor Department, we thought, you can't, we found out that you cannot force anyone to take that pay.
Well, the policy was put in place be.
Right.
After people had accrued seven hundred hours, so.
Yeah.
So you're saying your policy is illegal?
Probably. But I don't think, we'll check it out, but I don't think it will be illegal to say you must do it. Or lose it like you do your vacation time.
Well, we can't vote on whether to keep comp time or not, because there ain't a motion we can have for it. We just have a motion for the payout.
It'll have to be decided.
Yeah, it's, it's, so I, I think a person should, the department head should think really hard about this, that.
It'll be a discussion for next year, for the following year's budget.
Because, think about this a little bit more. We can't make that, just, we can just sit there and talk about it, but we're gonna talk all day about it.
Can we, can we put it on the next budget if Jamie has the language protected by the, for vaccine meeting? What did I say?
Next budget.
Next budget.
No, the next meeting, I'm sorry, the next regular meeting.
Agenda.
On the agenda.
It's a budget issue for the following year, being next year's budget's already made up any of it.
But shouldn't we have the policy changed, so that we don't have another year's of accrual or whatever?
We can take that part, as far as. How much you're gonna cure, we can put on there.
All right, and that you have to use it?
You have to use it.
Can, can we, if we do put that limit on there, they have to use it in that fiscal year? If they don't use it, do we have to buy it out from them at the end of the year with that statement in there, or do they just lose it and we don't pay them for them hours?
Like I said, when I was working and accruing all that comp time, I lost, I can't remember, somewhere between forty and fifty hours of vacation time, cause I was already at my max. So there's nothing you can do about it, you just lost it.
I just wonder, is that legal for us to take their comp time away and not compensate them for it at the end of the year without paying them?
I think it is.
Without buying it out?
I think it is if we have that in the policy.
I think if you've got stated that if you use, don't use it, you lose it type thing, it's fine, but.
We'll check it out.
That'd be something, that'd be a question for Jamie.
But I don't see any, I don't see any reason not to change the cap before you, and I don't see a problem with saying, just out, not saying to God, if you have to take it, or you're losing it. And everybody knows that you have a certain amount of vacation time you can accrue, and if you, if you don't use that, you lose the, the next accrued hours. Everybody knows that and accepts it.
I guess we'll just put on the agenda for the next meeting there and.
You know, back in the day, they forced me to do something. They forced me when I worked for the, to take my comp time.
In, in the form of pay, or just?
No, they said you have to be gone, you have to.
Admin leave used to be like that too, you couldn't carry it over to the following year.
Cause commissioners were worried about it and, um, brought it up to him, and mine had to be used, and it was quite substantial. I was gone almost three weeks, I believe, the one.
That's why I find it hard to believe that, that even though the accrued comp time that's, that's on the books, that if we put a policy in the place, even though it does, even though it's, uh, after the fact, that some of those, uh, deals wouldn't have to follow that too, to where they would have to either buy down that comp and get rid of it, get it off to where it falls under the, the rules that are on the books.
Like Gary said, it was, you know, it, it's a competition between vacation and, and your.
Right.
It's basically another day for you to utilize, you know, so.
Why don't I just see if Brian can be on speakerphone? Our next regular meeting, and then we can get all these questions answered.
First one is generally.
Yeah.
I thought you could. Nothing else, I'll take a motion.
That'd be six.
I'll move.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Jim.
Hey, thank you guys for listening to this stuff. They, uh, I guess the state team were done on Monday, and some of us were open to some of that, so thank you for giving us.
thank you for giving us the same days as them.
I read too, some of them, not all of them yet. That's what I've kinda lost.
Morning.
No. And there's some, I don't, I'm not educated in that stuff, there's such stuff that we're gonna talk to Jamie about. Gary's gonna have to be in the middle of that decision, but he understands that a lot, a lot better than I do.
See you later.
See you, Mary.
The way I understand it-
I love the payroll thing.
This is not a for sure deal, that's a conditional use permit, and the land is in Maurice's name, so he's the one that has to get the conditional use permit, and then when they get that, then it transfers, he can transfer that permit with the land.
Didn't they already sell the land?
Hmm?
I thought they already sold them the land.
I don't think it's gone through yet. For, for what I understand. I don't-
Even on the application, so they have another party on there. I just read it over there, Maurice's name on it, and they don't have no reading, and they've asked over here. And they don't say.
Yeah, Jeremy said he didn't know who it was, that's, and thinking about it, you know, it's kinda like that outfit that wanted to build that convention center over, over there in Moberge, and they come and got their liquor license. First, a convention center without a liquor license, they turn, well, then they didn't build it anyway.
How is Dodge's name, can you deal with that, right there? We gotta have, what's gonna happen to the roads match?
That Maurice is gonna have to sign off on all that. In my mind, yeah, Maurice is gonna have to step up to the place and take all the same responsibility for the roads that we're gonna, that we want them, cause it's Maurice's name on there. You know, and I don't know what kind of agreement he's got with them, or what, but, you know, I guess if it was me, I would be a little concerned signing a deal saying I'm gonna move that off.